Oh, you're fine. Jim, see you.
Hello, great to see you.
You're fine, absolutely fine, yeah. So Petra, are we good now with the quorum from your board?
Mayor Wayland, I wasn't able to hear, was that Pam Duncan who arrived?
Yes, we have Pam Duncan and Jamelin Penn.
Thank you, yes, we do have a quorum.
Fabulous, thank you very much. Well, we have a fairly full agenda tonight, and it starts with a welcome introduction, so I will go ahead and introduce with self-introductions of folks from the Lakewood City Council, and then Jamelin, I'll turn it over to you, and you can do likewise with your folks, and then we'll start with a review of the Community Advisory Committee process. So, you know me, I'm Jason Wayland, I have been on the Lakewood City Council, this is my 13th year, and have very much enjoyed the work we've done collaboratively as a community, including with members of your board, and we look forward to tonight. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, good evening, everyone, I'm Mary Moss, I'm your deputy mayor. I've been on the council for 13 years as well, and I'm enjoying every bit of it and happy to have you here tonight, thank you.
And I'm Paul Bokey, I'm Position 7, and I'm on my third term on the council.
I'm Linda Farmer, I'm on my first term, so only three years on the council, I feel like a baby.
I am Patty Bell, this is my first term on the council, so I was appointed, and then this is my first elected year.
And I'm Mike Branstadter, and I've been on the council with the mayor and deputy mayor for 13 years.
I'm Jenny Rawlings, I'm one of the volunteer members of the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Brian Murphy, principal with Burke Consulting, and here in support of the CAC, very excited to be here tonight.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Darwin Peters, I am a small business owner here in Lakewood, and also one of the members of the Community Advisory Committee, or Community, you guys get it.
Great.
Good afternoon, afternoon, evening, what a day. Being president in this moment, my name is Jamelin Penn, and I serve as a community member, but I serve as the board chair for the Pierce County Library System, this is my third year on the board, third year of a five-year term, and so I, along with the other board of trustee members for the library, I'm looking forward to listening to understand what the advisory committee has to offer or share with us this evening, but I would like to have the other trustee members take a moment to introduce themselves.
Good afternoon or evening, everyone, my name is Pam Duncan, I am on my first year with the Pierce County Library System. And I do understand that we have a few of our members, trustee members, who are virtual.
Great.
You are on mute, trustee?
Good evening, everyone, I just wanted to apologize for not being there in person, I know how important today is. My name's Neisha Patel, and I've just completed my first year as a trustee on the Pierce County Library System.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Any other members?
Not at this time.
Great, well, welcome, everyone, it's great to see everyone, this is really a joint meeting a long time coming, because it's wonderful to have our boards together, especially the significant information we're going to receive tonight, and we all know that the process has been a long one, a heartfelt one, and I believe, from what I hear, a very thorough one. So without further ado, I'm going to turn to Mr. Murphy and Catherine Getz from Burke Consulting to give us a review of the process.
Great, thank you, Mayor, it'll actually just be myself speaking of process, as Catherine had a conflict come up tonight. If we could see the slides, we'll move through this, and I'll just introduce my part by saying, I'm going to do the boring bit here, and then really clear the stage for Darwin and Jenny to share our specific recommendations, or the CAC's specific recommendations, rather, for the downtown library and the Telecom library. Ah, let's see if this will work, where do I point this? All right.
Our clerk can help you out there, Brian.
There we go. Well, let me first say, the CAC or the Community Advisory Committee members worked really, really hard. We'll talk a bit about process, but the meetings were well-attended, very engaged, and we had a lot of great participation, so I know others will do this, but I want to extend my personal thanks to the members of the CAC for their attention and good input throughout the process. We were also supported and guided by Mary Getchell and Becky Newton from PCLS and from the city, and supported by other city and library system staff as well. There were others on the consulting team providing support in addition to myself, and you see their names listed there. There's no need to call them out more than anyone else, it's a team effort. The CAC was charged with advising the library system on how to provide the best possible library services in a safe welcoming space for both Lakewood and Telecom residents, or Lakewood residents, whether they are using a downtown branch or the Telecom branch. So, we reviewed existing community input, it dates back to 2019, the future libraries work that had been done then. We also did some original community engagement to gather fresh input to inform the process. We spent some time reviewing the current conditions of the library buildings, both the downtown library and the Telecom library, and thinking about how would the CAC make decisions, what were the criteria or the factors that were most important to consider as they made their recommendation. And then ultimately, their charge as the CAC was to make directional recommendations to the Lakewood City Council and Pierce County Library System Board of Trustees in the report and in this presentation this evening. And by directional, we mean the input and the options that were considered by the CAC were at a very much a planning level with a lot of unknowns, and so the recommendations are designed to give direction and encouragement to the board of directors as they make decisions with more precise information and more precise options in front of them. We used this slide a number of times in the process to ground the CAC in what their role is, which is really the first step in this process, and at the highest altitude, to evaluate different options for both downtown and for the Telecom community, to discuss those options and then to provide recommendations, and that's why we're here tonight, is to share those recommendations with the board in particular, understanding that you'll take that information along with other input that you have, and then the board has the duty and the responsibility of making the ultimate decision on the direction to be taken, at which point staff pick up the hard work of actually making that happen. And so CAC conversations were, by necessity, at a higher level, not really getting into individual sites to be evaluated and our cost, and thinking we're fairly high-level. I'm sure the CAC is going to stay involved, so you haven't seen the last of them, I'm quite certain. We met five times between June and October to cover the information and spend a lot of time, as I've said, reviewing background information and context. There was a great presentation from staff from Building Work, an architecture firm that does a lot of library work, to just talk about what does a current, what does a contemporary library look like, and what is possible in terms of a renovation, because obviously some of the options that are being considered are renovation. That was supported by PCLS staff as well. As I said, we shared the summary of community input, and I'll do a brief overview of that this evening. We talked about costs at a very high level, and then spent a lot of time considering these evaluative criteria and then applying them to specific options that the CAC identified. I can assure you, it was a very robust process, lots of information was shared, a lot of complex information was shared, sometimes contradictory even, and it was important to try to tease that apart and evaluate trade-offs, because there's no easy or absolute answer that is the best answer, each option carried with it its own trade-offs. So I'll speak briefly here to what we heard from the Lakewood community. In terms of process, we did a community survey, and hopefully many of the folks in the room this evening and watching online participated in that. We were pleased to get over 2,000 responses in the period that it was open and advertised. We also did six interviews, Burke staff did, with partner organizations that often work with the library and work with the community here in Lakewood, and summarized that input. And then a combination of Burke, city, and library system staff attended some fun events here in the summer in Lakewood and gathered additional input from community members and made presentations. So all of that information is pretty rich, and there's a deeper summary in the report, but I'll speak here pretty briefly to what we heard. In the survey, there was a lot of interest in having spaces for updated technology and additional programming. We heard so much about accessibility, and you'll see that reflected really directly in the CAC's recommendations in terms of location. It's got to be accessible on foot, it's got to be accessible by transit. Parking, yes, but accessible on foot and by transit, really heard that really strongly. A strong desire from the community to have well-maintained, safe, clean library with adequate lighting. I think we can all, you know, kind of picture the library that people want, it's bright, it's clean, it's modern. There was definitely interest among some in preserving the existing downtown library. There's an emotional attachment to that building and to the place that it plays in people's hearts, and this is one of the tensions that the CAC sought to think through, is that attachment to the current site, to the current building, and the options that a renovation or a complete rebuild might offer. The big log featured in a lot of discussions and a lot of input, I don't know what to call it actually, other than the big log, and people have a real strong attachment to it, and that's got to be featured in the new library. How's that for an absolute? In terms of library services, you know, access, inspiration, equity is really important. Flexibility is also important, and you'll see that again reflected in the CAC elevated criteria. We don't know what the library of the day after tomorrow is going to look like, so we need some flexibility in the building to make sure that the library can adapt to that, those changing conditions. And some of the pictures here, I believe the two on the left are from Building Work and from that presentation that they shared, that was pretty inspirational in terms of what can libraries, you know, look like, and help shift from, you know, the current building is pretty, is very beloved, but, you know, I just drove by the Telecom library, and it's a little bit sad, and so, you know, these images are pretty exciting. So when we talk about what matters most, I'm going to speak a little bit here and then pass it to Darwin to speak about downtown in particular. Absolutely unanimous in saying that Lakewood should be, should continue to be served by two libraries, both in the downtown and in Telecom. This is not just what we heard from the CAC, this is what we heard from the community, and Jenny's going to speak more to the importance and the reason behind having that library in Telecom. The CAC recognizes that to do that is going to take a substantial investment. So they hope that there will be a significant fundraising effort to reduce the cost to taxpayers, and that a bond investment somewhere between, say, 17 and 30 million dollars might be necessary to do that. It's going to take some investment by the community of Lakewood to provide these capital investments. The numbers, you know, we tried to really caveat to say, we don't know, they're looking at very preliminary numbers, a lot of conditions can change in the future, but I think the bigger point is that it's a significant capital investment. The CAC really stressed the importance of maintaining that building and maintaining operating hours. There was some consternation about the state of the current buildings, and that was expressed, and if there's this investment made, it's got to be well-maintained, and it's got to be open. So, looking for some cost efficiency in how it's operated, understanding that the library system has a fixed budget to maintain staffing at libraries, so if we make that more expensive, the trade-off is reduced hours. The CAC felt it really important that we maintain hours that the building is open, so it can serve the public and people can come in. We discussed partnerships with other providers in general, and there's some openness to that, seeing that it may reduce costs through shared spaces, and also improve access to services for community members, kind of one-stop shopping as you have currently in Telecom, people really enjoy that. But there's really an emphasis on library services first, the CAC was very, very clear to say, there may be consideration of other services if space allows, but we're really here to support library services. These are the criteria that the CAC both helped shape and then wrestled with. They're grouped by, you know, service suitability for library services, for other services, that flexibility factor to adapt to future services, the location being so important that it's accessible, that there's parking, also that it helps stimulate, this is an investment, helps stimulate the economy and the neighborhood, helps improve the neighborhood that those library buildings are located in. In terms of practicality, you know, tomorrow would be really nice, yesterday even better. The CAC favored owning the building, having the library system own the building as opposed to leasing for the security that that provides, and then affordability in capital costs and operating costs. And when we pushed to say, well, what matters most, it was these guys that we folded on the slide that matter most, so service suitability for contemporary library services, the shorthand became, it should be the library that Lakewood deserves, flexibility to adapt to future library service models, accessibility, ownership, and affordability and robust operating hours. All right, I'm going to leave the stage here, and Darwin's going to talk through the recommendations for downtown.
All right.
Mr. Branstadter? Before we go into the recommendations, I just have a couple of questions about your presentation, to be able to go and do that, that...
Maybe focus on the process questions, Mr. Branstadter?
Yeah, the process question.
Recommendations on later.
That, given the importance of a library for the complete community in different segments of the community, perhaps having different priority needs for what the library would serve. In your community engagement, where you ended up with a demographic distribution of the 2,000 respondents to do that, it differed greatly from the actual demographic distribution of Lakewood. So, did, what did you do to try to reach out to the unresponsive area or the folks that are there? And this is not unique to this engagement process, you know, for reasons of culture or socioeconomic or neighborhood, we frequently have to make more than one strategy efforts to try to really get close to a demographic response when we're trying to deal with something where we want public engagement. And I guess I didn't sense that from your presentation, as I saw that you did, after you got the survey, you went and did some one-on-one interviews with some people from some organizations, but I didn't necessarily see that expanding the demographic mix, and how did you make allowances for that, or wait where you did get some minority things over there in terms of presenting information to the Citizens Advisory Committee?
Sure, so, no, thank you for the question, council member, so the survey was well-promoted, but it was only, it was only taken up or only filled out by those people who chose to do so. So it wasn't a random digit dialing, and it doesn't, you know, pretend to be a statistically representative survey of the community. To augment that, we did a couple of things, we went out into the community and did intercepts at some community events, and then we had stakeholder organizations, including the Boys and Girls Club, the Emergency Food Network, the Senior Center, Norris, Pierce College, and Rainbow House, to speak to community members that they work with, and we also had the CAC providing their own perspective, including folks who, you know, fill different roles in the community. So we tried to get a relatively diverse perspective through that aggregation of different input.
So, when you went to, when you say the Boys and Girls Club, did you go and talk with boys and girls?
No, no.
Or did you just talk with some staff in the building?
We just spoke with staff, yeah, as representatives of, you know, folks who work with on a day-to-day basis for those community members.
And when you looked at that data, and in terms of what it was, how did the fact that you got a predominantly white and predominantly older population, do you think that that influenced what people wanted from the library?
You know, I really, I couldn't say, council member, we, one point that we made is, and I have the slide on the screen, is that this process is fairly early in the process, and there will be substantial additional engagement with the community, including, you know, if this goes to public financing, there'd be a vote, and so there'd be substantial additional community conversation. I, you know, can only say this is the process that we did, and that the voices that we heard were helpful. It was also not meant to be sort of a a community survey-led process, it was helpful to augment some of the information that was provided, but we are largely, you know, relying on the CAC as representatives of the community to help share some of those voices.
And you had a slide, it's back, but it showed some timelines of course, some things were going to happen in different periods of time. And what's the difference between provide comments and provide input? On the public line there? It goes from provide comments, and then at the latter stage, it's provide input, and trying to discern what the difference and what the role of the public will be in the later stage.
Yeah, so when the, when the board, the elected board of trustees is making their decision, I think that members of the public are able to provide comments in those meetings, and then as the process moves forward, they can provide input. I might change those words if I were to edit that now, I don't mean to provide, sorry, to imply a significant difference in that public will be giving their input throughout the process. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Branstadter. Any other lingering questions on process before we get to recommendations, which is kind of the meat of tonight's meeting? So I think, Mr. Peters, you are next for the downtown recommendations, is that correct?
That is correct.
Awesome, thank you.
I mean, if you want to do this, no problem. Yeah, good evening, everybody, thank you guys for allotting us this time to have this important discussion. And before I go into what the actual recommendation was or is, I just want to add that we, although it was only five meetings, we did take a lot of time, right? The surveys were a portion of it, but a lot of it, especially with the group of community members and leaders that we had, we all came from different perspectives, representing kind of different groups, and being able to speak to the conversations that we have as well within the community and amongst the different groups and businesses and organizations that we're a part of. So, the survey captures, you know, those 2,000 voices, but there were far more voices that were actually heard, or, you know, when we were having these conversations. And so when it comes to the downtown library, we discussed a lot of things, obviously, you know, this is a very soft spot for the community, right, given the history of the building, and that was a lot, that was very important. And so we talked about that, when we talked about what the downtown library is valued for. One of the things being is location, is accessible to the community by the bus line, by foot, by car. It's easily accessible, and some of these quotes, if you look on the right side of the slide, that comes from the community members, not from us. And so, you know, one of the first things, I love having a local, easily-accessed library that is connected to a bigger system. It was really important to the community to make sure, and to our group, to the advisory committee, to make sure that that stayed the same. The other thing was this tradition of providing library services to the community, right? This library has been here for a very, very long time, it has a very robust history, and it means a lot. And that goes into that emotional attachment of the building. Ultimately, what we decided with a lot of consideration to a lot of things, location, the community that we're serving, the cost of the different options, and I don't know, do we, do we have the different options? Nope, okay, so our recommendation is to keep the library at the same location, building a new library on the current site. So that would be to essentially build an entire new library, but remain in the same location, and definitely keep the big log. If that is not possible, then we recommend to build a new library in an equally accessible location. I think it's important to note, though, that we definitely feel very strongly that we should try our best to keep the library at the same, at the current location. Our reasoning for that, when we looked at everything, we saw, looked at the cost and new construction is more cost-effective than renovating the current building. The, it also supports the library services and future flexibility that we were looking for, Brian talked about that earlier. One of the big things was maintaining or having flexibility for the fact that we don't know what tomorrow's library is going to look like. You know, when we were in 2004, we could have never imagined that we would be as digital as we are now, right? And so things like that change, and we want to make sure that we have the flexibility to do that. Also, the centrality and accessibility of the current library site is valued. And also, we, or the library system owns the property, right? We mentioned ownership is big, is very important, because it takes away some of that risk of what happens when you're leasing the property and what you're allowed to do and what adjustments you can make. And also retaining some of the elements of the existing building's character, and this goes back to that emotional connection. We wanted to make sure that we were intentional in hearing the community and hearing how important that this building, this current building is, and so if we could somehow find a way to build a new building that still has that old feeling, we thought that that would be great. And so that was our recommendation on the downtown building, and Jenny is going to talk to you guys about the Telecom building.
Before you start, Jenny, I just want to make sure that I also recognize one of your board members. I think Pat Jenkins, the vice chair, has appeared virtually, so welcome, Mr. Jenkins, and thank you so much for participating tonight and being part of this great process. We're waving to you, I think somewhere, yeah.
Of course, thank you.
Yes, sir.
In part to help to answer Mr. Branstadter's questions and some of the rest of you, this notebook in front of me is all the material that was presented to us, that we went over through the course of the five meetings. The survey wasn't ideal, there were 2,000 or close to 2,000 responses, and that's about 2.5% of the population. And 80% of them are white, and more than half of them were 50 or over, older people answer surveys. But it was what we had, and we had 143 pages of very small print with the lines of things that people had responded. 383 of them said they wanted the library at the old site, they wanted, most of them wanted it just like it was, but that's not going to be possible after we'd seen all the maintenance reports and so forth. But they were very positive about that. But they were very positive about that. 25 wanted it at, at the town center and 383 wanted it where it is. So that's a fairly significant difference in terms of what the wishes of, of the community are, and that weighed very heavily with us. Was there something else that you had a question about in terms of survey?
I think my questions about the survey were, were, were answered. Whether I like the answer or not is, is another, is another, is another answer. I mean, that I, I, I am always concerned that we want to have a library serve all the, the breadth of Lakewood, okay? And, and, and that, and that, if you're a student of history and you go back, you can think of lots of people in history that were immigrants that came to this country and they found a library and they went and did something and they became great successes or they made great things. Or they just had great families to be able to go and do that. And I think that we have a segment of population that is like that, that it has a great potential that a library can energize, that has, has, has happened for 150 years in this country since libraries became really predominant in communities throughout, throughout the country. And so, you know, you know, personal vision, and I probably read one of my little lines on that, because I took it, but you know, you know, he always, that I really want the library to be a catalyst for individuals to get to what they want and particularly for individuals to make better lives for their children than they have had up to that point. And so I, I was a bit concerned that I don't know that those voices got heard. I under, I read the thing and I understand when I read the, the demographics why at the top of the list was the packed building with technology, because you needed technology to be able to, to answer the survey, to be able to go and, go, go and do that. But there are a lot of other things. And so, but I, I understood that the limitations of trying to do engagement and you probably have to spend a lot more effort and be a lot more inventive to really reach a population as broadly as I would have liked for, for, for there to be. Now, I will say that the, the Citizens Advisory Group Committee actually had a better mix than, than the survey in terms of representing the community in that regard. Okay. And, and, you know, so I am, you know, encouraged by that. But I, I guess I understood, I, I understood the answer that we did the survey, the survey had limitation, but that we were in a timeframe, timeline and, and being able to go and do that and that, you know, so, so that there were other things, but.
One thing that I found interesting was that with all of our discussion about technology and the availability of technology, three times as many people talked about coming to the library for books than they did for technology. Books are still the heart of a library. And I found that comforting.
Go ahead, Ginny. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Branstadter.
Let me go ahead and talk to you a little bit about Tillicum. Tillicum is a, a lake and highway trapped community. There's not easy access in and out of Tillicum. It's a, a poor section of, of our city. It's hard to get services there and the Tillicum Library is in the Tillicum Community Center Building that houses a food bank, a, a medical clinic, senior meal services, as well as the library itself. It's leased, and that's something that's of angst to the library system, but it's what we've got. And we looked at the Tillicum Library very closely. The building is not terrific, although they have lately, lately painted it and put new, new gutters on it and repaired places in the siding and so forth. They're working on it, but it's still not ideal by any means. And eventually, it would be hoped that the library system would be able to purchase some or all of the building and be able then to make renovations and expansions and so forth of the space that's available for library services. The one thing that really makes the difference with the library is its location is optimum. It's next to the Tillicum Elementary School. It's just in front of the big childcare center with, for, for primary, for preschool youngsters. And they can get to the library without ever having to go onto the street. So all of that is very important. And the mix of different services there are also good for the library because they utilize some of the, the space that the meal site would sometimes use and so forth for, for bigger programs and so on. So having several services available in the same building has been a big plus. We might go ahead. The big thing was that the committee was really adamant about the fact that we needed to leave the hands off the Tillicum Library. We needed to renovate the existing building, renovated if we could on the existing site. We looked at other possibilities there. The, if, if this is not financially or practically feasible arrow is there, but we didn't really think that that was the way to go. What we really needed to do was stick with what we had. Our, our site that the city owns is not optimal because in order to get to it, the school kids would have a terrible time. There's no sidewalks. There's no place to put a sidewalk. There's buildings right up to the edge of, of the street and so forth to get around the corner to get to that piece of property. And it's not going to be optimum to, to put a, a library on anytime in the future. The city is planning to put some sideways walks in on the other side of the street. So that's going to be a problem. Safe access is going to continue to be an issue. And the fact that we can use several service providers in the same building is a plus with the current location. I'll put in a little plug. The Friends of the Lakewood Library now have a, a space for used book sales there in the Lakewood Library, of Tillicum Library, rather, and you're all welcome to come and buy used books if you want. And the staff there at Tillicum needs big kudos for their imagination and the way they have tailored their programs to meet the needs of their community. They set up a community garden in the back of the library with a seed bank. They've done all kinds of creative things to meet the needs of their community. Our biggest problem when we were meeting earlier this summer was the fact that it was not open, but just a short period of time, four hours a day during weekdays, but they are on the Fourth of December, I think, expanding the hours significantly, which will be a big help because the number of people from the Lakewood area who are coming to Tillicum to utilize the services is increasing. So people are finding the Tillicum Library. It's not necessarily easy to find, but they are finding it and they are utilizing it. So we feel that the Tillicum Library is important and we need to continue to maintain it as well as we can and continue to provide services to the Lakewood population. Are there any questions? Please ask questions.
Certainly, Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mayor Whalen. So my, my question is, and I'm trying to think back to the study that's now something like 10 years old about the size of the libraries. And I know the one in, in Lakewood, here in this part of Lakewood, the size, the proposed size was going to be larger. The Tillicum Library now has X number of square feet, and I'm looking at staff over there. And what is the ideal size for it?
I'll have to find it here in my book. But, oh, he says he's got it right here. Oh, well done, well done. We currently have downtown, we, we thought we ought to have at least 20,000 to 30,000 square feet. I think that right now we've got, yeah, 24,000, I think, at the present time.
Correct.
Tillicum Library, they were, we were hoping for somewhere between 2,500 and 5,000. And at the present time, we've got 2,100. So it's not so very far behind, even though it's a little space. Yeah, yeah. Other providers have space of their own that are utilized by the library staff too. So all of that's helpful. The, the Lakewood Library of the 19 libraries in the Pierce County Library System is the, was, was the most visited library of all. And I think that's one reason that the, the Lakewood population felt so bitterly, the closing of the library was because they really used it. And to have it suddenly closed like that was a big shock and continues to be. But hopefully, we'll get an interim library up soon and we can make use of library services here in the area as soon as possible.
Back, back to Tillicum. It's next to the school proper, I guess. I'm guessing the property probably at one time, the underlying property was actually owned by the school district. I don't know that. Who even owns it?
I think it was originally owned by HUD and now it's owned by the community.
It's the American and Lakewood Gardens Association. So that's, I think that's just the concern. The CAC, as Ginny said, was very strong in saying that they would like to see that current facility renovated or, or rebuilt, but we don't own that building. We don't own that property.
Any discussion with the school district? I mean, I, I know they're very reluctant to give up property or even talk about co-use of property. So any thoughts that that Tillicum site is large enough to, I mean, or adjacent property right there? I mean, if, if, I get the access to the school is important and that is kind of the center of the community there. Was there any discussion about?
Well, what's next to the library is the playground for the elementary school. And there's, there's not other practical areas that would, we, we could generate a brand-new building very readily. There is some room if we could, if, if ownership could change of the present building, there would be room on the site to expand out to the side and into the rear so that we could expand the, the square footage of the, of the Tillicum Library if the building were owned and, and that, that was possible. But nobody touches the Tillicum Library until we have a new library in Lakewood. We, we don't want to lose what we, what little we've got. Yeah.
Thank you. Consideration, and we're looking at the, that facility and considering the, where it sits and expanding outward, but is there opportunity for vertical to, to build up? And are there any requirements or standards in place that say that we can't go up as opposed to going out?
There's, there's not for the main Lakewood Library. And in fact, the committee suggested we go up there, but as far as Tillicum goes.
Tillicum is.
Yeah. The, the present building really isn't, I think, physically fit to build up. It would have to be redone in order to build up.
Been out there a couple of times and just taking a look. I was wondering whether or not the CAC had taken that on, under a consideration, I guess is what I'm asking.
The library system wasn't very interested in building up really on either site because it requires more staff. And they felt that it was, the new, modern library is all on one level. But we, we had lots of ideas about building up.
Ginny, with regard to the, the facility site over there in Tillicum, I know this wasn't part of your charge, but I wonder, forward and future thinking, do we know what the capital facilities plan is for the Clover Park School District for that school? Because I think it's on the list at some point to be rebuilt, renovated. That may be part of a concept with regard to that facility that has, as you've described, great mixed juice opportunities. Has anyone looked into that or do we know?
We, we didn't get any input on that from the city or, or, or the school district or, or the committee or, or the library system. We just didn't get any of that information.
I don't think we have anybody here. Sometimes we have staff that, that does great work jointly with Clover Park School District, but I don't think we have Mr. Bu or anyone here that might have a, an inkling about that. But it's just something to think about down the road because again, it's all the taxpayers' money, right? So the more that we can facilitate joint use that's collaborative, that makes sense, the better, in my humble opinion. So anything else, Ginny, on that, on your presentation on Tillicum? And then I'll get to questions in just a minute. Anything else on the overall presentation? So questions of members of the panel, Mr. Branstadter?
Yeah, Mayor, thank, I, I'd just like to comment a bit about Tillicum Report. For a long time, Tillicum was my library of choice. I, 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 I went there. It was, it was the, the library in the system that I went to when I was still in the Army and was stationed at Fort Lewis and was there. I spent a period of time on the board of the Tillicum American Lake Gardens Community Service Center. And so I understand how that community truly values the mix of services in one spot. And that, you know, you'd be challenged for folks in Tillicum to say which one is most important. They, 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 it's the mix that's important. You know, you know, if you, if you didn't, if they didn't have that health center, they'd be a healthcare desert. The, the food bank is, 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 is really exceptional. There, there is, there are staff there that are navigators that help people connect services countywide and, and the library. That, you know, the library building and the space is the least important part of the library. The staff at that library have always been innovative, connected, done, you know, and, and sought to make, to multiply the impact of that library greatly to be able to go and do that. So, 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 so I understand your recommendation and I understand why, where the community would like, you, you know, the, the important things in the, the community are not something brand new and, and different, but that it, it serves them in the way that it's historically served them. And it's, and it's somewhat unique, okay? You know, they don't, they don't operate as a contemporary library. They, they operate in the space where they are for the people that they have to serve, to be able to go off and do that. So I'm certainly going off. But I did have a question on the two recommendations that are each tiered. And you have a primary recommendation that I can, I can agree with. And, but then they all got that this is not possible. A second one. And so with respect to the downtown library, what made you think that there, that it would, that it might not be possible?
Well, you know, I, I think that really just comes down to wanting to be able to present that, that if, if not then kind of solution or, or recommendation. So it's not, it, it wasn't really a discussion of like, well, will they be able to? But it was a, we didn't want to leave with just this recommendation and that not be possible. And then we, we have nothing else, right? So we, we do, we spend this time, we have all these discussions and we go, well, we think that we should rebuild on the site. And you guys decide, well, no, that's not possible. And now basically the recommendation is, is gone, right? And the community's voice essentially is kind of taken out of that. So we wanted to make sure that it was, it was tiered. So, you know, with everything that we discussed, everything that we looked at, I was like, okay, without a shadow, without this is the best option. There really should be no reason that this shouldn't be able to happen. But just in case, we wanted to make sure that we, we had that secondary recommendation. And, and, and basically, we, we looked at it several options. And so we, we, we took those options and we kind of tiered them. And again, the recommendation was, I mean, if I had to give it a percentage of, of what we wanted, I'd probably say And again, the recommendation was, I mean, if I had to give it a percentage of of what we wanted, I'd probably say like ninety-nine point nine percent, right? And so it's like, if that point zero zero one is there, then that's that's it. But I hope that answers answers the question. It wasn't.
Well, I I I mean, it answers it better than I understood it, okay? You know, it that, you know, the point zero zero one potential that's not possible is I I I was concerned that the way that it was tiered was going to add into the timeline for another piece of evaluation that was going to take time to be able to go and do that as opposed to saying, get started doing this, okay? Going on off. I think the one thing that I don't want for Lakewood is that I don't want Lakewood to follow in the footsteps of the Hilltop in Tacoma. The the in 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 the Hilltop in Tacoma is getting ready in January to celebrate the tenth anniversary of having no library. Because ten years ago, the library there was closed. And said, man, we'll get around to, you know, when when we can, to getting you a new library. And they're and and they are they are no closer in terms of because it's all being it it's always, well, we're trying to figure out what's feasible and is there a piece of land and whatever, everything off. And I just don't want that for 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 Lakewood. I don't even, I don't like the fact that we're in the situation we're at now, but I don't want to be sitting at home ten years now and know that 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 there's a city council and a library board that's trying to figure out how to how to how to do this. Well, so 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 I, but if if I understood what you said, the 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 if this is not possible, that was really viewed by the CAC as it probably is possible, they just if something we don't know causes this to not be possible.
Absolutely. That that secondary recommendation is to try to prevent exactly what you're talking about, right? Time is of the utmost importance, and we we recognize that, you know, like Brian said, we wish this could be done tomorrow or yesterday, and and that we were never in this situation. And so the secondary recommendations come for that specific reason. So that if there if this, if for some reason it wasn't, that we're not going back and having to reevaluate. And it's taking another five months, right? Just to come back together and review everything again, or a year or so on and so forth. So that's that's exactly why that's there, because we recognize that time is of the utmost importance and how just how essential and valuable the library is to the community. The Lakewood, the downtown library and the Telecom one, and even though the Telecom one is still open, right? What they need and what this what they deserve in their community. So that's that's exactly why we did that.
And the the other thing that I guess I'd go back to saying. I've heard some different explanations about the ownership is preferred from everything from ownership is mandatory and not having and 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 leasing is a non-starter completely to ownership is preferred if it's uh, but but leasing is allowable or if if that's what is feasible to be able to go and do that. Or it's like in the Tele and it's more important in Telecom uh, where ownership is probably very hard to do, given that if they were going to sell the building, you wouldn't be the owner, the only tenant that would want to buy it. Uh, you you know, you know, the 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 Pierce County went through an idea of trying to sell that building, you know, fifteen years ago, and there were plenty of folks that wanted to buy it, but they wanted to buy it all for a single use. Um, yeah, and it's got some specific rules because it was built with hun dollars and it's it comes with 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 rules about how it's got to be a community thing to do that. But, uh, you know, is there really something of some significant difference operationally for the library system? And I, this table may not be the ones to answer that, about that differentiates between ownership and 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 operating out of a leased facility?
I could say that we have not had any dedicated conversation about the difference between the two. That is not a conversation that we've entertained recently. And I would need to go back and talk with the other members of the board and actually listen to some guidance from the executive director of the library system um, to see whether that is something that we really need to consider in our way forward. But at this time, no, we have not had any extreme or dedicated conversation in that regard.
But as far as we know in this room here, there's not a legal prohibition from 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 either library ending up in a leased facility. Uh, but may that may not be ideal. Uh, maybe that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Branstadter. Any other questions of members of the council? Any other questions from members of your board, Jenny?
I am pausing to see and with understanding, I do see that we have trustee Patel, who has a question.
Yes.
Um, yes, my question, I was looking at the CAC report. And on page six, concerning the Telecom Library, it says that engineers recommend building a new library instead of renovating the existing building. And I was wondering if it's possible to expand on that?
Sir, what what page number was that? Page?
Page six, right. It's in the the first, the second paragraph at the top.
The pages are just a little bit.
Page six. So it says the CAC, pardon me, recommends renovating the existing building or rebuilding on the existing site. So what we've talked about is that ownership, in order to for the library system to put substantial resources into that building, they would have to own it. You can't really invest significantly in a leased building in that way. And so that's where the recommendation to, you know, pursue acquisition of the site is the CAC's recommendation.
Um, and so it actually says engineers recommend. So I was wondering, you know, what the engineers, what their reasoning was for that.
Yeah, this is the.
At the top of page six of the packet, on the second paragraph, it says in second sentence, engineers recommend building a new library instead of renovating the existing building in April of twenty nineteen. Oh, then it goes on.
Oh, I snuck over here.
It looks like it says page two on the bottom, but up in the top six, is this what we're talking about here? Okay.
It just appears to be another reference to the fact that it's an old building and probably is structurally and mechanically obsolete and would likely need significant renovation. That's what I gleaned from that paragraph.
I believe that's right, Mr. Mayor. That's that's the intention, is that in the background documents that were provided, that where there was an engineering analysis of the building, or at least an engineering look at that building, they didn't feel that renovation of that building would be really feasible or recommended, and that a a rebuild would be a better better course.
And from what I hear of the recommendations of the subcommittee, a rebuild would be potentially twenty-five hundred to five thousand square feet for the library portion of it. So not hugely onerous or significant. Yes, sir.
And now that, just remember, we talked about that in in the very beginning, one of our first meetings, and that was actually what led to to the answer to your question when we were talking about ownership. Right? That that was a part of that. It was more specifically with the Telecom Library System because we did go through those reports. Um, and I don't think the report that we actually saw is in here, but it was a lot more detailed on the conditions of the the Lakewood, the downtown library and the Telecom Library. Jenny probably does have it in there. And so it that the report that we got to see looked at, you know, the roof, the walls, the carpeting, the just the building as a whole, and it and it graded each area. So we we took a lot of time, actually, in our first, I think that was our very first meeting, discussing that and what that meant for for both libraries. Um, and so that was where we talked about of trying to acquire ownership. Because, again, we know that investment, we don't, making that investment on a leased building, one, if it's even possible, because ultimately that's up to the owners and and just what that will look like in terms of of that. And then, of course, going with the visit and seeing the property and seeing the building and and all of that. That's why the recommendation was either to renovate it or rebuild on the site. But in order to rebuild on the site, that would more than likely require that the ownership of the building.
Understood.
Thank you for that clarity. I do understand that trustee Duncan has a comment or question.
Thank you. I I need some clarification. I understand that this is was not actually the most scientific survey. I am trying to understand, however, exactly what the prevailing public sentiment is about the downtown facility. Because on page twenty-two, it says, one-third of the respondents note that they do not want the current Lakewood Library Building to be replaced. So it says about thirty-four percent. That's on page twenty-two. And then on page twenty-four, it says roughly half. Okay, I'll just go, roughly half of two hundred respondents support rebuilding or renovating the current downtown library. And then on page twenty-five, it says less than a quarter supported retaining the current building. So I'm just trying to understand what the prevailing sentiment is because I'm not clear.
Yeah. So actually, those statistics are sort of pulling from open-ended questions. We did not ask, we didn't have clarity on what the options were when we launched the survey. So we didn't ask, should the current building be kept and renovated or taken down and rebuilt? So we were looking through open-ended questions and trying to understand what people had given us as input. What we took away, or what I what I believe the CAC understood from that is that there was a portion of the community that's quite attached to the existing building. But the greater sentiment was of the support for that existing site over the existing building. And that's kind of the direction that the CAC went. Um, but but I think the more important point that I might make is that there's so much information that the public didn't have access to. We wanted the CAC to wrestle with all the engineering, with the trade-offs, the costs, uh, the consideration of what a new building might look like. And so we didn't actually want to be driven entirely by what the community sort of preferred in a, you know, multiple-choice question about should the current building be be torn down or not? Because not all of that information was available to the public, consumed by the public over five long, long Zoom meetings and really thoroughly understood, whereas the CAC did engage with those trade-offs and make those considerations. Um, and definitely heard the sentiment that there is an attachment to that existing building and tried to understand, you know, how to interpret that and how to think about that. Is that fair, Darwin, to?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I I mean, I think I think you said it almost perfectly. That that's really what it comes down to. We we came into into these meetings, understanding the the general sentiment of the building, the location, right? Having those conversations individually with the community members. But when we looked at everything, when we looked at the cost, when we looked at the state of the building, it was just, it was it was clear that it made more sense for the community, right? To or to rebuild on the site, right? And we felt like that that kind of was giving the best of both worlds, being able to at least keep that emotional attachment to the location as well as the 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 convenience to the community within that location. But also still giving the community, everybody within the community, the opportunity to have the library that the city deserves. As we've, you know, continued to grow as a as a city, Lakewood looks very different than it was in nineteen ninety-six, right? Or or even farther back. And so being being aware of that and wanting to come together and really try to give the community the best of the best of everything that that we could recommend with the information that we had.
Definitely, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm just curious if we had our dreddles and you are able to rebuild in that location. Is it large enough for a senior center or other mixed uses in there?
So that that was something that we talked about really in depth. Uh, and and we don't believe that it is large enough to do both. Um, if we rebuild on that current site, just with the, I think, the within the size of the library that we're looking at expanding to. Um, in addition to taking into consideration the additional parking requirements that it would take, we don't believe that it would be large enough. Um, but it was also something that that we decided, just as as a group, that our priority was going to be looking and making the best decision for the library system and not and not not so much everything else. So we were open to those, looking at other partnerships, whatever makes the most sense. But we wanted to make sure that we kept the priority being the community and the library and what was going to be be best for that.
So when you talked about tiering, what did you have in mind?
I'm sorry?
When you talked about tiering?
What do you, as far as?
Multiple floors.
Oh, so so we, when we, I believe when we discussed that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I I think the answer that we were told is that to to have tier, have multiple floors, it would require additional staff, which would then impact the hours that the library was ran. And I believe this is was the answer that we were we were given. And so for us, it was obviously more important to us to have the library open to the community for longer than to have to cut the library time, operation time down. Is that correct? I I want to say that that was, okay.
So so conceptually, nothing's in stone. I understand that. This is part of the early part of the process. But when you articulate a potential need of twenty thousand square feet, are you indicating single-story approximately?
No.
No.
It 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 could be a partial uh, second story as it is at present.
Subject to staffing issues, as I hear.
That's the staffing issues, yeah. The the we were told by the library system that they would much prefer a single story. Uh, but if we can get, you know, more in there, parking was a big issue. Everybody had red flags about parking. And so we we tossed around some ideas of how we could perhaps do something to help with that. But, um, yeah, to have a second second story, at least a partial second story, uh, the committee was not at all adverse to that idea.
Good, okay.
So we'll see how that will go. One thing that we have not yet addressed and needs to be presented to the town council at least is that a great many people who answered the survey were concerned about the homeless and about the use of the library by by the homeless and about the fact that things that the homeless did discouraged them from using the library. And particularly the Lakewood Library. So that's something that we probably could address now while we wait for the new library to be built, if that's possible. We had requests for services in the library that would include laundry and and showers and things that that aren't library business, but that the homeless need. So that those things are important. The things that particularly they they had kudos for in terms of library services was the curbside pickup, the law library, tax support, and the homeschool resources, all of which are not available at the present time.
Very good comments. I can I can tell you, I have similarly heard concerns when the library was open uh, about the homeless scenario and how for some it was challenging from a personal safety feeling from some uh, on that. And I can tell you, I heard different stories from other people where they felt it was just fine to have them because they're members of the public as well. But I think this is me talking individually, that if we collectively, which we know we have to, ultimately go to a vote of the people, I think we're going to have to provide a sense of direction on that particular issue. And I can tell you, the council is is looking at potential uh, local ordinances that will impact all public property within the city, including the library district's property. Uh, as for facilities for the homeless, the city's investing heavily in losses. In Loss's new facility that will have a hygiene center. And that will help alleviate that particular need, so we're working very, uh, hand in hand with, with Loss over on Gravel Lake Drive to expand. Uh, not only their facility for additional housing units. But certainly for a hygiene center that will have laundry and showering facilities, so that will be taken care of at that facility.
There was also a request for lockers. Where people could put their possessions and could lock them up.
That would be a, a library. Here's kind of library system determination on that.
I don't know that the library could produce that, but perhaps the city could. Would it be possible for us to have the other members of the committee who are here present stand up so you could see?
Absolutely.
Would you all stand up if you were still here?
We applaud you and your time and investment. We know tonight, Chair, that this was an opportunity to present the recommendations. Uh, and I understand we didn't want to get into the weeds about next steps or process or timelines. Uh, as that unfolds, I believe you have a robust. Website that provides information to the public on the, the new interim facility that will be. Uh, coming soon. Uh, but I wanted to give you the floor to provide any closing comments or remarks you may have and, and then I will wrap us up.
Excellent, thank you so much. So first of all, it came in like a, a firestorm and I thought, Jamel, and where are your manners? So I, I, I do want to step back for a moment to say to, uh, the mayor, deputy mayor and council members, thank you. For that opportunity, for the, the partnership in this conversation, listening to, understand collaboratively. Think it's important that, uh, and the roles that all of us play, that we, um, are listening to what, uh, the information that is shared. Um, and that we are. Down the road, um, taken into, under advisement, the needs of, of our, our community. So thank you for that, and, um, I know that on behalf of the rest of the trustees, uh, that this, um. It's, it's heavy. This is a, a big responsibility. We are taking it quite seriously. Um, we came this evening to listen, to hear, um, we have some, um. Important meetings that are coming up, um, in the very near future, so that will be our way forward. Digesting this information that has been shared tonight. I know that we've all taken, um, notes, I know. Um, I was looking over at trustee Duncan, um, and I want you to know that we, um. For the CAC, want to say also thank you very much for the hard work, the dedication, um, the seriousness. That you took, um, in taking a look at this information and coming this evening to present it to us, so. Um, thank you, um, we are. Looking forward to our conversations and, um. Uh, I appreciate all of the work that you've done. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I just want to, uh, close a little bit. I think everyone's had opportunity to ask questions. And we just want to, as a body, thank you very much for your partnership. Thank you to the committee members for your service. Uh, we know that it was heartfelt and, uh, took a lot of time, a lot of study, a lot of digging. And certainly a lot of, um. Wrangling both emotionally and intellectually about how to grapple with recommendations that make the, the, the best sense for a community like this. And I, I just want to leave you with a couple of thoughts, uh. I think it goes without saying that. From the experience we've all had and the input all of us have received over the last six to eight months. We readily understand that the Lakewood library is of imminent importance to this community. Uh, libraries, not just in Lakewood, but for some of us who've been military people or have lived around the country. Understands, uh, understand that libraries are really the soul of many communities and. Harness the heartbeat of so much that is vibrant about a community. And we know that this is, uh, uh, an unfortunate series of events that's brought us to where we are. And I think this is a time many of us have talked about, not a time for, uh, any further teeth gnashing or finger pointing. This is a time to grab a hold of an incredible opportunity, and I think we have to embrace this as an opportunity. Lakewood is twenty six years young. And we have been doing things the way we have known, uh, as best we can for the last twenty six years. And now we have an opportunity to perhaps do something different. And I would really encourage all of us to think big and to think bold because we know. That libraries are really a catalyst for incredible civic engagement. Uh, economic development opportunities and just wonderful challenges. Uh, to bring together diverse communities to do cool things together. As I look and if I had a magic wand, which I don't, I'm just one, um, but if I had a magic wand. I would encourage all of us to think big and to educate the community to think big. As we head into the next decade of this city's civic life. What does a downtown Lakewood look like? What should it look like? How does it feel? How do we engage with one another? What does a downtown have that's robust, that attracts, uh, individuals to come, shop, live, work and play? And again, if I had my magic wand, I might think about something that's more connected. We heard about the need to have accessibility, both transit and walkability. We heard the need about being engaged in the civic core of the downtown. I can tell you that council's goals and objectives include having an urban park. Here in the downtown of two to four acres. What a wonderful opportunity to have the civic heart. Of the Lakewood downtown, the civic library adjacent to a park that would really make. A vibrant downtown Lakewood. I, I offer that because I know that there are monetary considerations about keeping the land where it is, and I certainly respect that. But there is an alternative. Recommendation, and there are opportunities to think big, and I would encourage all of us to think big. About what is best for Lakewood's future, because we have not just a ten year future or a twenty year future. Fifty to a hundred years from now, we want our children and our grandchildren to look back and say, what foresight. These people had to create something special. Out of a challenging opportunity. That really made the Lakewood of the future that we know we can have and want to have. That's my thought for tonight, and again, thank you all for coming. Really appreciate your participation, and those of you appearing virtually, thank you very much for being here tonight. I can tell you, more to follow. So, and with that, we're adjourned.